All right, we will be calling this evening's meeting to order. We will have the invocation by Dr. William Hill of First Baptist Church of Jonesboro. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Gracious and wise eternal God our Father, we thank you for this gift of a brand-new day. We thank you, Lord, for your grace, your mercy, and the truths of your eternal word. Pray that you will continue to pour your blessings upon this county. Bless all of our commissioners and our chairman, and bless all in attendance here on tonight as we discuss the business of this county. And we pray that all that we do and say and share here on tonight will give you honor, praise, and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening to everyone. We will now move into the adoption of the agenda. Prior to doing so, I would ask the board if any members would like to offer any amendments. Hearing none, can we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Well, Madam Clerk, did you remove the zoning petition? You sent that to us.
No, no, I have not. We did receive a letter from the applicant asking to withdraw the zoning petition. So if a member of the board would remove that item from the agenda, that is item number 29 on the agenda.
Madam Clerk, I'm going to make the motion that we withdraw at the petitioner's request, their zoning request. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
May we now have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Did want to reiterate that the zoning petition, the applicant Clayton Northbridge, has withdrawn that application, and this item has been removed from the agenda. Thank you. Approval of the February 3, 2015, regular business meeting minutes.
Give it just a second, Madam Clerk, while we allow them to go ahead and exit out. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
We will now have public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have items one, three, four, five, and six are citizens that do want to be heard before the board tonight. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residence for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
I am before all of you this evening to begin my series of public commenting and to provide all of you verbally with direct and indirect factual information, proof, and evidence through newspaper articles such as the Clayton News Daily, the Clayton Neighbor, the Atlanta Journal and Constitution, the GBI Georgia Crime Information Center Uniform Crime Reporting Yearly Summary Report, past information from the Clayton County Police Department. A lot came from you Chairman Turner when you were chief, and other credible articles to prove that when the MARTA bus system is up and going, which will start Saturday, March 24th, from what I read in today's AJC, crime will increase in this county, and the gang problem that is already of epidemic proportion will get even worse. Now Chairman Turner and Commissioner Rooks, you supported the bus system. Your constituents wanted it. I respect that, and you did what your constituents wanted to do. So the majority of Clayton County wanted it. However, I'm one of the citizens that believe unless you do some of the things that I was suggesting, and this will be over a series of meetings because there is so much to say, and I want you to see a lot of the information, my folders of information, just want you to see from articles and everything, so you know that I will be coming from factual, indisputable, irrefutable, absolute, already-established truth that has already occurred. Now, there's so much, like I said, the overall purpose in presenting this information is that we're in budgetary season, and crime and gangs are a problem in this county. At the urgent of Deputy Chief of the Field Operations Division Gina Hawkins in Systems, I attended a police academy last year in the fall. Remember Chairman Turner, I attended your first one. On Monday, October 13th, there was a presentation by Officer McKay on gang awareness. Now, the gangs have been sort of quiet since they terrorized Clayton County in 2004 and 2005, and I was very livid to hear that not only when he gave the presentation, that as of right now Clayton County has over seven to five criminal street gangs with over 1,500 members, and that's a low estimate. It's probably over 100 and over 3,000 members. Now, when those gangs went crazy in Clayton County, and this is an article, well, from Wednesday, August 23rd, 2006, from the Clayton News Daily where they said Clayton gangs problem among worse in metro Atlanta, there were 47 gangs and over 1,200 members. So even though crime statistically is lower in these past few years when Chief Porter's been chief, the gang problem has increased. And I was also not pleased to hear that there's only one gang intelligence person, Officer McKay. Now, at the time, he told the class, we peppered him with questions, we inundated him with questions, and knowing, you know, I was the main one asking the questions because I was not pleased with this. And he said he gave a proposal to Chief Porter in terms of beefing up the gang intelligence unit. And when he submits his budget, if he has it in his budget, and I hope he does because now that I'm putting on public comment, that you will consider putting monies in that. Now, my time is now, my maximum three minutes has ended. I will continue this at the next commission meeting because this is important, and we need to do our jobs for the people that are concerned with the increase in crime in this county. I will talk to you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige Turner.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Paige Turner. I'm from Rex, Georgia. I'm also on the Clayton County Animal Control Board, but I'm more coming as a citizen tonight. As many of you know, we have quite a few that come in our intake. As a matter of fact, in January, in 30 days' time, we had 305 animals come through the shelter doors. For the year of 2014, we had over 4,391 animals come through the shelter. Owning an animal is not a right anywhere. It's a privilege, and with the privilege comes responsibility, and that responsibility comes from the pet owners. I'm asking you tonight to please review the ordinances that we have in place right now and see if we can find a better way to make, to hold pet owners more accountable for their pets. There's no reason for the taxpayers of this county to have to pay for other people's animals. The, you know, we need to try to get some kind of registration going. I'm working with the board right now, and I'm hoping that we can present something to you, you know, some, some ways of clearing this up, but if you'll just review what we have now and see how shorthanded we are and how we can take the lead in this county and in this state on animal control. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a public comment. My name is Michael Sullivan. I live at 313 Worthing Lane in McDonough, Georgia. I come to you as a local minority business owner who is, just are applying for participation through the county's local small minority business program. And first, I want to say that I applaud you and I thank you for your vision, for making sure that local small minority firms are included in the procurement process, and I appreciate your commitment to that. I'm excited about the contract compliance department that you've established and what they're doing. And as a local small minority firm that is in a county that would qualify under the program as a contiguous county, I thank you for that commitment. Particularly, I come related to an RFP that is currently on the street, RFP 15.06, which is the Special Local Option Sales Tax Program Management Services Solicitation. And as a small minority firm, I find that there is language in that current solicitation that really will prohibit or make it very difficult for both local small minority firms to participate at the highest level, as well as for a number of large, major firms in terms of participating, because the language specifically states that they have to have extensive experience in SPOLOs programs. SPOLOs programming, and I'm not trying in any way to share something that you or I don't know, but I just want to, you know, to iterate the fact that SPOLOs program is a colloquialism that's used in Georgia and a few other states as a funding mechanism. But if you really are trying to include and to make sure that there's competitive and open competition in this process, I would recommend that the language be worded slightly different to remove that they have to have a minimum number of years of SPOLOs program, program funding, and instead, look at what they really need to have, any firm that's coming to the table, and that is to make sure that they have a minimum level of program management experience in local governments and worded in such a way that it takes into consideration all, all types of programs, whether it's SPOLOs funding, whether it's tax-funded, or whether it's self-funded. That broadens the scope and allows more firms to participate and allows for more minority firms to really be able to participate. As it's written now, it really would limit it to just one or two major firms that could at this point meet the minimum requirements. And key personnel, it also says that key personnel has to have a number of years of SPOLOs management experience, and that limits the number of individuals who could even be on a firm's list of key personnel. And, you know, I'm not in any way recommending that you lessen the requirements for making sure that you get it capable and then firm that has extensive program management experience, but just, you know, removing that particular piece of language related to SPOLOs funding would open the door for a more competitive procurement process. Thank you all so much for listening.
Thank you, sir. And if you would, get your information to Ms. Brewer. She is our Central Services Director, so we, so she can fully understand where you're coming from, and then we can look at it and make an assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Samuel Ibanez, I believe it is.
Pleased to see you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for giving me the time, you know, for this meeting, and also we want to ask you for support for a program that I want to develop as a lake, a big lake and just like a Lake Lanier in Clayton County. The fact is that we've been in a situation before that we lessen water. We was, I guess, about five years, six, eight years ago, we was on deficit on water. So now, what can we use land on Lake Lanier, I mean, on Clayton to bring a Lake Lanier, a lake similar to Lake Lanier of that size, or bigger, to use water here in Clayton? This petition was made out before to Mr. Bell, Chairman was before, but three or four times it never be heard. So now, we're looking for a place that we can locate it and the opportunity to help as part of the Hispanic community and, um, as well, when that, this one also was mentioned it for transportation, for MARTA, or I was trying to use the buses from the churches, but he was never, never came to a place. So this time, I want to thank you for, um, support for the transportation, and I have another programs to work on MARTA buses to what the gentleman was mentioning about the, um, bring out the, um, the crimes down in civilians. This might, this lake might take $48 million for the ones, we don't want to raise taxes, but we profit for non-professional sessions and by volunteer workers, as also for volunteers, engineers that I have spoken already. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry. Are you, just for a point of clarification, you want us to create a lake like Lake Lanier?
Well...
I don't know what was presented before. When you say you presented it to Chairman Bell?
Yes.
What are you referring to?
Um, I spoke to him several times when I have a meeting with him, and don't recognize no one of you that I was spoken, when I was talking to him.
I'm new. Wasn't me.
Do you have this in writing, sir?
That I have talked to him?
Initiative, do you have it in writing?
Hmm, that I have spoke to Mr. Bell?
No, your plan.
Right now, your plan, is it in written?
Oh, well, it's still working on in construction, but that's what I was saying, we're looking for a place where to locate it, and we're looking for like a green light for you.
Okay, what I want you to do is get with Mr. Cohelius, our COO, and provide him with some information, and he'll be able to help you further in terms of taking a look at your request. Thank you, sir.
We will now have proclamations. The first is recognizing the Clayton County Rotary Club. If the representatives would please come forward at this time, I would also ask the Commissioners to rise from their respective seats at the table and join them for the presentation.
And the proclamation reads, "Clayton County recognizes the Rotary Club of Clayton County in observance of Rotary Day on February 23rd, 2015. Whereas Rotary International is an international service organization whose stated purpose is to bring together business and professional leaders in order to provide humanitarian services, encourage high ethical standards in all vocations, and help build goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas, the Rotary Club of Clayton County was chartered on June 10th, 1960, and is the parent club of Lake Spivey and Henry County Rotary Clubs. Current officers include President Pam Ferguson, President-elect Patty Sharma, Secretary Thomas Giffen, Treasurer Ben Loggins, Foundation Chair Leda Chinon, Membership Chair Paul Roberts, Sergeant-at-Arms Yvonne Holmes, Assistant Governor Tom Myrtle. And whereas, the Clayton County Rotary Club has provided dictionaries to each third-grade class for the past six years, with over 22,000 dictionaries being delivered. Therefore, every child in grades three through nine in Clayton County has his or her very own dictionary. And whereas, the club members deliver Meals on Wheels and partnered with a spaghetti dinner fundraiser to raise both awareness and funds for the Meals on Wheels program. The Clayton County Rotary Club also provides food for several local food pantries, assists foster children in giving Christmas gifts to their families, provided fruit baskets to the elderly, and jointly sponsors the Star Student and the Clayton County Local Fund of the Community Fundation of Greater Atlanta with grant awards each year. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize the Rotary Club of Clayton County and celebrates the anniversary of Rotary Day in Clayton County, Georgia on February 23rd, 2015. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim February 23rd, 2015 as Rotary Day in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing the Rotary Club of Clayton County, its officers and members, and outstanding impact they have on the community and in the lives of Clayton County citizens. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the 17th day of February in the year 2015. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman."
We will now have the proclamation, recognizing the Lake Spivey Rotary Club.
with diverse backgrounds could exchange ideas and form meaningful lifelong friendships. The Rotary's name came from the group's early practice of rotating meetings among the offices of each member. And whereas, the Rotary Club of Lake Spivey was chartered on February 16th, 1998, and meets weekly to continue their dedication of implementing the Rotary's motto of service above self. And whereas, members seek to promote high ethical standards in business and professional life, cultivate international understandings, and exemplify goodwill. And whereas, the officers of the Rotary Club of Lake Spivey include President Dr. Donald L. Swafford, President-elect Dr. Misa Sam Banham, Secretary Cindy Kerr Kelly, Treasurer Tanya Smalls, Foundation Chair Terry Taylor Hammerick, Membership Chair Gloria Riley, Sergeant-at-Arms Marcus Thorpe, Officer-at-Large Debbie Walker. And whereas, the Rotary Club of Lake Spivey provides financial and volunteer support to elementary school literacy programs, middle school science fairs, and charitable organizations such as House of Dawn, Hearts to Nourish Hope, Rainbow House, and Arts Clayton. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize the Rotary Club of Lake Spivey and celebrates the anniversary of Rotary Day in Clayton County, Georgia on February 23rd, 2015. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim February 23rd, 2015 as Rotary Day in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing the Rotary Club of Lake Spivey, its officers and members, and outstanding impact they have on the community and in the lives of Clayton County citizens. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the 17th day of February in the year 2015. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman."
We will now have a presentation by Dietrich Stanford, Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, with regards to the establishment of the Clayton County Youth Commission.
All right. Good evening Chairman, Board of Commissioners.
Chairman told me to be very brief, so I'll make sure I do that.
Just had to throw that fart out there, Dick.
Of course. I'm excited about bringing before you this evening, requesting the Board of Commissioners consideration on behalf of Commissioner Gregory, Resolution 2015-45, the establishing of a youth, a Clayton County Youth Commission. The rationale behind that, studies indicate that early involvement of our youth in the spectrum of governmental processes will increase their awareness and enable them to become more effective leaders in our community. The vision seeks that involvement of Clayton County youth in planning, development, and implementation of community activities and services will be best served. One of the rationales that we talked about as Commissioner Gregory in our talk was about civic engagement, trying to figure out more meaningful ways that we can get our youth involved in the governmental processes within the county. The facts associated with that, the proposed structure of the commission would consist of nine members between the ages of 14 and 21. All appointments of this commission will be made by the Board of Commissioners, and all members shall serve one year terms with a minimum of one appointee from each commission district in the county. An individual may sit up to a maximum of four full terms if reappointed, except for that anyone who turns by age 22 during that term may not be reappointed. And also, once the commission is established, they will kind of establish bylaws on the frequency of the meetings, develop the processes in which they can get more involved with advisory committees, as well as get information back from the respective Commissioners about things you would like to see in your respective commission, or as the Chairman would like to see county-wide. As we talked about the financial impact, requesting initial budget is $2,000. The purpose of that would be for meeting supplies and materials, but more importantly, a lot of the youth commissions that we looked at throughout the country, or looked at within the state, they kind of had a uniform, they gave them a way of identifying their role, they became ambassadors within their respective communities. So this is a good way of identifying those respective individuals and the work they will be doing on behalf of the county. So with that, that kind of gives you a quick overview of Resolution 2015-45, and I entertain any questions.
Why to 21? You have 14-year-olds intermingling with 21-year-olds. Why is that?
Um, one of the things we looked at, it was primarily looking at high school age to individuals that would be graduating during that period of time. So we've had some high schoolers that actually are 14 and some are 13, but we want to try to make sure we kind of capture that age group that consists of a high school age group primarily.
I agree with 14. I don't agree with 21.
Got it.
How many high schoolers are 21-years-old?
Well, unfortunately, they are a few.
I think they had to get out at 21, but...
Well, let me ask you a follow-up question. I mean, do we have some concerns about supervision and things like that when you have legal adults and children and things of that nature, and maybe we make it 14 to 18 or something like that?
We certainly can. The other part of that that I left out was that we were asking the board to actually make recommendations on adult advisors as well, so they'll kind of serve as the overseers of the actual youth commission. So you also would make some additional recommendations to include adult supervision for that age group.
Are we talking about county supervision or employees, or are we talking about...
The models we looked at, there is usually a county staff representative on the actual commission, and then sometime they had like volunteers that had a specialized skillset that could be appointed by the board at large.
What are you recommending?
Recommending that at least there's at least one staff advisor and at least one advisor from each of the Commissioners, adult advisor, in a specialized skillset, that brings a specialized skillset to assist with any of the civic engagement, learning more about parliamentary procedures, anything of above. So ultimately, we have this cross array, a cross function of individuals on the board.
What staff member are you recommending?
I think we can even go with our constituinees. I mean, as, because they are like the nuts and bolts of what we do, you know, constituent services. They can serve as an...
As the advisors?
As, yeah.
Who's implementing it? Who's going to be the person who puts it together?
But departments gonna fall on them.
It wouldn't fall upon our department.
I'm not talking about department. I mean the structure of it. I like the idea. I've seen it. I've heard about it, but it needs to be fulfilling to... the students, so who's going to lay out that program?
There are two methods for which individuals could do. You can have an initiating board or initiating advisory group that kind of would get them started, and then you have individuals that will maintain the actual facilitation of the program throughout, or you have individuals from his inception and continue to serve in an advisory capacity throughout. So the model in Savannah specifically looked at there being an initial advisory group, and then in turn they turn it over to this group or this body that would serve as kind of liaisons and took care of the work from there.
I know the group in Savannah, that, yeah.
Well, specific to this resolution, it says the Board of Commissioners will appoint those advisors of staff and citizens. It also says that it will not take full board appointment for each of the youths. So will that have to come back to this board to appoint those staff and volunteers as a body, or are we delegating that to our staff? I don't want to complicate, I'm just reading it.
No, no, and that's okay. And as we said, and I apologize, because you know, it's hard to get with everybody individually, so that's why I was asking Dietrich to do a presentation, so we can get everybody's input. Everything is still up for change, suggestions, or whatever, but we had thought about not necessarily having that be something the Board vote on, as far as advisors. You know, there might be a community member, it could be someone with the school system that might want to be involved as an advisor, someone in a, you know, in a leadership role in the community, and so forth.
Well, with that being said, it would be prudent for us to... Would it be prudent for us to hold this until we clarify the language in it?
And I'm fine with that, if we can get some, if everybody can just email Dietrich and give him some more information. Now, one of the things I do want you to keep in mind as we move closer to the end of the school year, we kind of wanted to, let's get this started, you know, because sometimes you lay things down until August or whatever, so let's start this, and so that when we can get it going.
I would like to bring her back next meeting.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion. And I will say, and I will say, the Savannah group brought their students, we had a legislative conference in DC last year, and they brought them to DC.
Yeah.
So it's a big, it's a big thing.
And they do all type of community service projects to actually raise a lot of their money, you know, to fund those trips and so forth, and it's just a great way to get exposure for our young people.
May I suggest that we invite a representative or two from the Savannah Commission? You know, maybe one of the advisors and maybe one of the, one or two of the students.
And they have said that they will be glad to come out.
Yes. They really do good things.
Yes ma'am, we also, we talked with the CAB in Fulton County, they also have a youth commission as well, but certainly we can reach out to others to provide us additional information.
I just think that, I believe Savannah was like the initiator of this, I think.
I think they...
They were one of the first.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
We will now consider the request of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Ms. Brewer, if you would, take all of yours together unless a board member would like to take one individually.
I have, I'll have some questions about item number five. Take that one separately.
I have a general question, but it relates to what's going on in number one.
Number nine?
One.
One. Okay, take number one and five separately, but the rest together.
Number one is a request for a 90-day contract extension, Second Amendment for RFP, RFP Package 1140, Clayton County Generator Inspection and Services. This recommendation is made pursuant to Section 2136, 1 and 6 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, General Purchasing Methods. The request is to amend the current contract with PowerProTech Services located in Altamont Springs, Florida. The amendment is for a 90-day extension period from March 1st, 2015 to May 31st, 2016, to complete the rebid process as requested by the Building Maintenance Department. ProPowerTech Services has agreed to accept the amendment. The building maintenance recommendation, vendor acceptance, and contract amendment are attached for your review and information. This request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions?
Yes. Just a point of clarification, it's May 2015, the extension.
Yes, May 31st, 2016.
Okay, and I know Ms. Brewer, this...
Oh, 15, I'm sorry, I did say 60, 15.
This doesn't directly apply to you, but since I'm starting my third year, and every year we have extensions because we can't plan for bidding, why are we doing that? And I know you're just getting here, my problem is, we're not planning accordingly to have these bid, the bid process start early. So maybe someone can assist her in addressing that question.
I advise you that going forward, we intend to bid everything out on a six-month advance planning, and that is our intention.
Okay.
That we would get with the youth department in advance of that, so that we would put everything out to bid in sufficient time.
Okay.
To have the contract in place at least 90 days and to make sure that it's bid out at least six months ahead of time.
Good. Is this going to cost us any additional money outside of what's already contracted?
No, it will be at the same price without any additional costs, just the normal cost that it would be for us to procure the services.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you want me to take five now, or just...
No, we're gonna vote on this right quick. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous. If you would, take number five now.
Number five is a recommendation for award utilizing the Fuel Cooperative to purchase gasoline and diesel fuel by Fleet Maintenance for use by various county departments, using the North Georgia Fuel Cooperative BL044-14. This recommendation is being made pursuant to Section 2114 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances. The recommendation is to utilize the North Georgia Fuel Cooperative to purchase fuel from Petroleum Traders Corporation located in Fort Wayne, Indiana, as a primary awardee, and Mansfield Oil Company located in Gainesville, Georgia, as a secondary awardee. Funding is available through the respective user departments' general fund for fiscal year ending 2015. The Fleet Maintenance Division recommendation and North Georgia Fuel Cooperative invitation to bid and bid tabulation are attached for your review and information. This request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman or his designee to execute all documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? Make the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Properly moved and seconded, any questions?
I do. Ms. Brewer, trying to give my handle around the prices of these. I know there's been a lot of volatility in the energy market recently, but you know, $3.06 for gasoline, I mean, we could do better just by paying retail down the street.
We have to have contracts so that we can guarantee a sufficient supply and quantity of gasoline. Those prices may be volatile, but we need a constant supply, and this is for a price that is delivered to our locations based on our needs and whatever our demands are, so we have contracts in place for that. Also, within the contract are negotiation adjustments based on market trends. There may be a little volatility in the market now, but those are anticipated to balance out, and we would still get a contract. These prices are guaranteed for four years should we decide to move forward, and if the prices are lower for an extended period, then there's built into the contract that we get benefit of the lower prices.
What, explain that last part, so that, like, for example, the 3.06 and a gallon, dollars per gallon, and it can go up by 5% a year?
Yes.
You say it can go down?
Yes.
Did you explain that?
It can also go down based on certain economic indicators, and the administrator for this is Gwinnett County, so there's a full-time person that monitors the contract, so that we, and the rates are published on each Monday, I think, and we are able to benefit from any decreases.
That's that one penny per gallon?
But if the indicators, the market indicators indicate that the price will go down and stay down for a significant period of time, then we are able to take advantage of that also.
I guess my concern is these prices seem to be in, and this isn't my area, but 40, 50% higher than what the retail price is right now, and I know it doesn't cost a tenth of that to hedge fuels, so why we're paying such a premium? I realize you say it's delivered, but it's delivered retail to the local QT also.
But we have a guaranteed supply, and as it indicates now, the trend is that we don't anticipate that those lower prices will remain, and we have to make sure that we have those quantities.
No, I understand that, I'm talking about, when I say hedging fuel prices, I'm talking about locking in the current low prices, and I guess my concern is that if this contract went out three or six months ago, that maybe these prices are aged and that there's a better deal out there for us right now?
Well...
Than a 50% premium from current market to lock in a price?
Yes, and we do have a current contract, and Mansfield Oil is with that, and that price is higher than these prices are with the Fuel Cooperative. And we could go back out, but I don't know, we could test it to see if they would guarantee those rates, but we are not sure, that's why you would have to have a contract, and we do the long-term contracts to make sure we take advantage of those.
Are we obligated to use exclusively this fuel per this contract, or can we use this as a cap but still go to the QT and save ourselves 50% while the prices remain low?
We could take advantage of other sources, I don't know if us going to the QT for, because this is for fleet and other quantities, if we could arrange that, but we could take advantage of other contracts and take advantage of this, it's not exclusive for us.
Okay.
How much are we paying now?
I think 3.20, is it 3.20? It's about 10 cents more per category than what's in the proposed agreement.
Okay.
And the pricing does, and the pricing is based on the market. If the prices are lower, $2 a gallon, that's what the county's paying odds of on these contracts, it fluctuates. That's the reason why every Monday, Gwinnett County, they check the OPIS pricing, and that's what the pricing will be for the week, and it's updated every Monday. So, yes, they did bid $3 and something, but it's based on the OPIS fuel level. And when I did check the pricing compared to what we're paying now, this contract on the cooperative was 10 cents a gallon cheaper for diesel and unleaded.
Sure, but those contracts were from four years ago.
But we still get the advantage because we had to, this is the contract that they're, they can't go any higher than this for, except for those percentages that are listed, that's the maximum that they can increase for us. However, they can go down, and we look at the market indicators, so this Monday, the price might have been 2.75, it might have been 1.98, it depends on what it is for that week, so we do get advantage, take advantage of that, and there's an administrator within Gwinnett County that makes sure that all of the agencies take advantage of that, so it automatically changes the rate for us. So we placed an order this week, it may not be the same price as next week, but it will not go higher than the guaranteed prices.
So when they talk about here about the percentages, plus or minus one quarter of one penny per gallon from baseline, not to exceed a penny per gallon over the full year life of the contract, you're saying that if it's $1.98 a gallon, we get $1.98?
Yes.
Doesn't just drop down to 3.05, and that we have to pay that?
No, but they're saying after, if you look at the indicators over a long period, the rate that's guaranteed, the 3.12 or 3.10 that's in here, that could change, that's the maximum rate, may go up or down.
Right.
But not the rate that we pay on a weekly basis.
So we're enjoying the $2 and whatever right now? Okay, thank you for your patience.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous. Take the rest collectively, please.
Number two is a recommendation for award for RFP Package 1474, Clayton County Police Department Purchase of Vehicles. The bid opening was January 20th, 2015. This recommendation is being made pursuant to Section 2136, Section 1 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, General Purchasing Methods. The recommendation is to approve this purchase in the amount of $77,190 and award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, Langdale Chevrolet Incorporated, located in Sylvester, Georgia, the quantity of two 2015 Chevrolet Tahos at $38,595 each. Funding is available through the Police Department's SPOS Bond Fund for fiscal year ending 2015. The Police Department's recommendation and bid tabulation summary are attached for your review and information. Number three is recommendation for award, RFP Package 1476, Clayton County Police Department Purchase of Vehicles, bid opening is January 20th, 2015. This recommendation is being made pursuant to Section 2136, Section 1 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, General Purchasing Methods. The recommendation is to approve this purchase in the amount of $55,538 and award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders, bidder meeting the specification, Wade Ford, located in Smyrna, Georgia, quantity of two 2015 Taurus SEL Limited at $27,769. Funding is available through the Police Department's SPOS Bond Fund, fiscal year ending 2015. The Police Department's recommendation and bid tabulation summary are attached for your review and information. Number four is recommendation for award utilizing a statewide contract to purchase VMware software support for the Information Technology Department from statewide contract number SWC 99999 SPD, SPD 0000060003. This recommendation is being made pursuant to Sections 2-114 and 2-136 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances. This recommendation is to approve the purchase in the amount of $44,246.33 and award to SHI International Corporation located in Piscataway, New Jersey. Funding is available through the Information Technologies Other Service Contract Account, the Information Technologies Recommendation, Purchase Order Requisition, and the vendor quote are attached for your review and recommendation. Number six is a, six is a recommendation for renewal of the county's crime policy. This recommendation is to renew the county's crime policy with the National Union Fire Insurance Company of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for the period of March 1st, 2015 through March 1st, 2016, with a premium amount of $12,688. This policy protects the county against losses due to employee theft, employee dishonesty, robbery, computer fraud, forgery or alterations, fund transfers, and other criminal acts. Funding is available through the county's general fund fiscal year ending 2015. Number seven is a recommendation for renewal of the Public Official Position Schedule Bond. This recommendation is to renew the county's Public Official Position Schedule Bond with the Western Surety Company for the period of March 1st, 2015 through March 1st, 2016, with a premium amount of $12,056.50. The Public Official Position Bonds, Position Schedule Bond provides coverage for all county public officials required to carry a surety bond. Funding is available through the county's general fund fiscal year ending 2015. Number eight, are recommendations for renewal of annual contracts. There are four that are being recommended pursuant to Section 2136, 1 and 6 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, General Purchasing Methods. A is RFP 1247, Full Service Preventive Maintenance of Clayton County's Interruptable Power Systems, Annual Contract with AC and DC Power Technologies located in Forest Park, Georgia. This is the final renewal period from March 1st, 2015 through February 29th, 2016. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on December 18th, 2012. B is RFP 1248, Clayton County Transportation and Development Stone Material Services, Annual Contract with Stevens Rock and Dirt Incorporated, located in College Park, Georgia. This final renewal period is from March 1st, 2015 through February... from March first, two thousand and fifteen through February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on December fourth, two thousand and twelve. Number C is RFP twelve fifty-one, Clayton County Transportation and Development Roadway Construction Concrete Services, annual contract with Larry Ford Construction and Company Incorporated, located in Elwin, Georgia. The final renewal period is from March first, two thousand and fifteen through February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on January eighth, two thousand and thirteen. RFP thirteen fifty-two, Clayton County Elevator Maintenance Annual Contract with Morley Elevator Company of Florida Incorporated, located in Marianna, Florida. The new renewal period is from March first, two thousand and fifteen through February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen. There's one remaining renewal on this contract. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on January seventh, two thousand and fourteen. There is one renewal pursuant to section two, one three six, section two and six of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, general purchasing methods, A, RFP number thirteen fifty-six, Turf and Lawn Management for Clayton County, annual contract with True Green, located in Ostale, Georgia. This renewal period is from March first, two thousand and fifteen through February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen. There's one remaining renewal on this contract. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on December seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen. We request for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the chairman or his designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
Some lift.
Is there a second? Now, second, properly moved and second. Are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now consider a request of Ramona Bivins, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have one item for your consideration this evening. I have one request for refund in the amount of one thousand eight hundred dollars to Ms. Chong Sabina, doing business at Mo's Outlet at sixty-seven twenty-seven Mount Zion Boulevard in Marl, Georgia. The request is to refund the alcohol retail license fees paid by Ms. Sabina to the Community Development Department. The applicant was not approved to receive an alcohol retail license based on non-recommendation by the Clayton County Police Department.
Still motion?
Still move.
Is there a second? Properly moved and second. Any questions?
I do.
Commissioner Gregory.
Yeah, I mean, are they closing? I mean, I'm just asking. Is that, chief, does that mean this is closing? This, this place is closing down, this outlet? I'm sorry. This request for refund of alcohol retail license was denied. Well, you guys recommend that they not receive their alcohol license?
Chief, take the podium.
So does that mean that this retail establishment is closed? This is the store that's just down the street from Allen Vigil Four?
Mo's.
I mean, what is, what is that?
Commissioner, good evening. Which, which location?
It's on Mount Zion Boulevard, at Mo's Outlet. Their alcohol retail license fee is being returned based on non-recommendation for criminal.
Uh, uh-
Her question is, are they closing if they don't have the license?
Yeah. Because that's all they sell.
The only thing that happens, they submit the application to Community Development, and then we'll review it and make a recommendation, then it comes back. I don't know the circumstances surrounding this particular, but I can get that information.
Yeah, because, I mean, because they don't, they don't have a pouring license, and that's what they sell, alcohol. And I guess that's why I question. Oh, okay, thank you.
I think he can answer. Come on up.
Good evening. When the recommendation from the police department is not to issue it, it means that the store will have to close.
Okay.
Will not, will not close completely. If they have other things that they sell, like they sell food and things like that, the restaurant part of it can still be open.
Nine point nine percent alcohol.
Then, that means the store will have to shut down, yeah.
Yeah. Who regulates that? Who, who's gonna check to make sure that happens?
Uh, we do.
Okay.
Now, is this Mo's Hot Wings, or is it Mo', a different business?
No, it's an outlet.
The little outlet over there, right across from, um-
Says beer and cigarettes and lottery on the, on the sign. They don't sell-
Maddox Road and Lake Mount Zion, Maddox Road and Mount Zion.
Okay, okay, it was the wrong area. Okay.
He said wings. How much time?
I would think Mo's Wings.
Yeah, yeah, when do they close? Yeah, how much time?
When you're gonna shut them down?
Well, once we refund the, uh-
She called to get some biscuits. No, 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 I just asked. No, no, I don't, don't.
Once we refund the money, we go out there and do an inventory. Make sure that we see all the alcohol. They're supposed to log them up by code. You have to take some measures so that folks who work there or the public don't have direct access to the alcohol. Then it takes them down to a time to ship them back to their wholesalers and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But the first step is to secure it, to make sure that there is no easy access to them by the folks who work in the store or by the public.
Okay. While you're still at the podium, this is a second refund that we've done because of a, a business owner having a criminal background. Is there a way to better streamline it so that we're not intaking their monies? They do a criminal history, and we discover that there are some improprieties, and then we have to refund it? Is there some way to do it conversely?
Only if, I think, the only way I think offhand is if they start the process from the police department. But when they come towards, I think the board will appreciate it. I'm interested in collecting their revenue, then go to-
So are we basing our budget on monies we have to later refund? We've been refunding a lot of money.
Commissioner Rooks, if you look right there where it says non-refundable, a few years before you got here, we had a big conversation around this. So we made a schedule of non-refundable portions to cover the cost of that, that criminal background check and, and the administrative cost, because there is a reasonably large, when you add it up in the annual budget, amount of refunded monies.
Right, I see that part. Are we counting the twenty-two fifty in the budget? No, never?
It doesn't cost, um, any money to refund because that process never completed. We never really issued.
Got it. It's a short process.
Yes. Yeah, we actually didn't issue that. We actually made money, by the way, because there is an administrative fee that we keep for doing the processing.
I, I see. So this is, but this is not a new business, right? This is a renewal? This is a renewal in the process of last year and now, reapplying?
Something happened to, um, the alcohol code requires that if you have infractions, any kind of arrests or shootings or things like that, there's a number of things that could happen in a business-
Okay.
That would cause the police department not to issue an approval.
Okay. Is, is there a way they can renew their license? I mean, is that one person that has that problem, or is it the whole establishment?
It, and it's quite interesting, Commissioner, because it's the whole establishment. Even if the, the employee is the one who is guilty of the infraction, it affects the business.
No, I mean, if they no longer employ that person?
Um, it doesn't really count. It counts at the time the infraction happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and second.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Right.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now hear and consider requests of Kristi Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Uh, I believe we were going to make a motion to table, I believe, the, which resolution is?
The, the youth commission?
Yeah, the youth commission.
So we need a motion for that.
Um, this is resolution number two fifteen dash forty-five. Resolution number two fifteen dash forty-five.
I'll motion to table that resolution.
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Rooks, second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I have one more request related to the email I sent you. Can we take resolution two fifteen forty-nine separate, or have some discussion prior to voting on it?
Well, I think under Roberts rules, we need to make a motion and second it prior to making, having a discussion, or can we have an open discussion on it?
You should make the motion and then have a second, and then entertain questions regarding that resolution.
Okay.
So take that one separate?
You want to take it separately? You have to take it separately.
Yeah, take that one separate. Are there any other resolutions you would like to take separate? I'm sorry, anybody? Okay, take all of them together. Let's hear those first, and then we'll go back to forty-nine. Take that last.
Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash twenty-nine is for second read and adoption, and this is an ordinance adopted under the Home Rule Powers granted to Clayton County pursuant to Article nine, Section two, Paragraph one of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three, amending the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, specifically relevant sections of the Clayton County, Georgia Public Employee Retirement System, to define the term leased employee as such term is used by the plan to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance. Next is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash thirty-seven, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part two, Chapter sixty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article one, general, by repealing and deleting the existing subsection D of Section sixty-two dash seven, loitering, and substituting in lieu thereof a new subsection D to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash thirty-eight is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with Street Whips Productions, LLC, providing for the terms and conditions under which a twenty fifteen car show project will be hosted at the Clayton County International Park. To authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, this event will be held July twelfth, two P.M. to nine P.M. at Clayton County International Park. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash thirty-nine is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with Atlanta Pyrotechnics International Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which fireworks displays will be conducted at the Clayton County International Park. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, these displays will be held on May twenty-third, twenty fifteen, and July fourth, twenty fifteen. Next is resolution number twenty fifteen dash forty, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement to, to allow the Haley Bankhead Foundation Incorporated to sponsor and host a five K walk and run for childhood cancer awareness at Clayton County International Park. To authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, this event will be March twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen, from eight A.M. to two P.M. Next is resolution number twenty fifteen dash forty-one, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept a forfeited vehicle from a Clayton County Police Department drug investigation. To authorize the sale of such property in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county, to provide for the dispersal of sale proceeds, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, this is a two thousand and three Jaguar X Type two point five. Next is resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-two, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement to allow Arthur Mitchell to sponsor and host the Albany Fest Atlanta reunion at Clayton County International Park. To authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, this event will be held on May twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, and May thirtieth, twenty fifteen. Next is resolution number twenty fifteen dash forty-three, which is a resolution to approve a special facility use request and to enter into a license agreement to allow the Riverdale High School Cosmetology Department to utilize Clayton County International Park, the VIP contact complex, to host a hair show fundraiser. To authorize the chairman to execute the license agreement and perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, the fundraiser will be held Friday, May first, twenty fifteen. And additionally, the, the Department of Recre- Parks and Recreation is requesting the board's consideration to approve a waiver of half of the department's facility use costs, which is normally seven hundred dollars, and to approve the special event fee of three hundred and fifty dollars. Next is resolution number twenty fifteen dash forty-four, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to execute two Title V permit annual compliance certifications for the Clayton County landfill. To authorize the chairman to execute the certification and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Next is resolution number twenty fifteen dash forty-six, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept a donation of television station equipment from the Clayton County Public Schools. To authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, this will be the donation of a news desk and a television news set. Next is resolution number twenty fifteen dash forty-seven, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a natural gas extension contract for gas service with Atlanta Gas Light Company. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement on behalf of the county and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All is may be required under the terms of the agreement. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, this will be for non-residential gas service at seventy-eight ten, Highway eighty-five in Riverdale. This is for the new fire multipurpose building. Next is resolution number twenty fifteen dash forty-eight, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a real estate purchase and sale agreement with, with EF Golf One LLC to purchase real property in connection with the two thousand and nine special one percent sales and use tax. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenues, to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses. All is may be required under the terms of the agreement. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we accept the resolutions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions on any of the items?
Yes. Um, hold on here. Resolution. Ordinance, twenty fifteen twenty-nine. Is this a first read?
No, this is a second read.
Oh, okay. Uh, I have on mine first read.
We did two weeks ago. Read it last week.
I know, but I'm just saying, on my ordinance, it has first read.
What is this?
It says first read.
Okay, thank you.
Is it in handwriting?
It's what's on the, um-
On the-
We have notebooks. They're using their iPads.
Notebook doesn't say that.
The, the board did the first read at its last-
Right.
-board meeting, so this is, this would be for the second read and adoption.
Okay, I'm just going on what presented here before me.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Last is resolution number twenty fifteen dash forty-nine, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept the resignation of Silverman Construction Program Management Incorporated for SPOS Project Management and Consultant Services. To authorize the chairman to perform any acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All is may be necessary to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other- All is may be necessary to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Gregory.
Mr. Chairman, I, I sent the email to the board members and other parties. And for the interest of time, I'm just gonna maybe start with item six. First of all, I expressed my disappointment in finding out that Silverman, we no longer had that project manager, and I got it from an outside vendor. And I just had some questions about the procedure and how this is handled. My, my main question, Ms. Barnes, to you, was the legal department a part of these discussions leading to Silverman's resignation? Or was the legal department consultant, consultant prior to Silverman sending this letter of recommendation? Were you a part of that?
The legal department wasn't a part of any, any discussions with Silverman Construction about the, about his, his services under the contract. The law department was made aware that Silverman had submitted a letter of resignation. And at that point, we were asked what the counties, what the county needed to do, what steps, if any, the Board of Commissioners needed to take to finalize the obligations between the two parties.
And let me ask Chief Cohelis come forward to clarify some of that, but I will also add that there was no negotiations in his resignation. He tendered his resignation.
Okay, and that. That, that leads to my next question. Does the contract that we entered into with Silverman provide that he can just resign and just leave on his own? Or, I mean, does the contract allow that, that, that the contract is void by, just by him sending in that letter of resignation?
The contract does not include any language that's, that says specifically about the ability for him to resign. Not those, not that exact term. But the contract does have language that allows the contractor to provide written notice of termination that he or the, whoever the project manager is, is terminating the agreement. So it, the contract allows, provides for language that allows the project manager to provide written notice of his termination of the contract.
And, and I go back to my previous question, was legal department a part of this discussion? Was legal consultant with, about this matter prior to, about the contract or?
Prior to him submitting the letter of resignation? No, we weren't involved in discussions with Mr. Silverman or, or anyone from his company.
Now, does, does the, just, does COO Cohelis have that authority to negotiate with the vendor of the county in that way, you know, instead of bringing it to the board? Without the board's direction, I mean?
To negotiate?
Right, I mean, because what is, you know, the thing that's troubling me is the procedure and how this was handled. Not necessarily, you know, necessarily that Silverman is gone or anything like that, even though I was very concerned because it's a project that's very dear to me in the middle of it. So my question is, does the chief operating officer have the authority to negotiate with the vendor of the county without the board's direction and approval?
I, I wouldn't use the term negotiate, but the board passed a series of resolutions that authorized the chief operating officer to deal with matters pertaining to SLOST-related projects. And that, I believe those resolutions were done between two thousand and thirteen and twenty fourteen, so.
Okay, and, and again, does the chief operating officer have the authority to negotiate with the vendor of the county without the board's direction and approval? That's.
I think we've already approved the COO, the prior COO to act.
Did we?
You did authorize the COO to be responsible for supervision of SLOST projects.
Does, does the COO have the authority to negotiate with the vendor in this manner?
What, what negotiation are you speaking of?
Negotiation of the resignation of Silverman.
Again, that's what we're talking about. There was no negotiation. They were talking about the projects and for whatever reason.
To me, according to the letter, the, the letter kind of led me to believe that there was some discussion or whatever or, you know, leading up to his resignation. And that's why, you know, this is just a little bit troubling to me. Like I said, the process is just, I don't know. I mean, if, if you're saying that the, that the board passed some rules that he can negotiate with a vendor, I, I would just like to see a copy of that and everything, so, but I'm gonna move on to the next question.
No, ma'am, if, if I may clarify, I'm not saying that the resolutions authorized the COO to negotiate a resignation. It's just that the resolutions authorized the COO, and I don't have a copy of those in front of me, to handle or to, to provide some level of supervision to SLOST projects. That's, that's the extent to which the.
Would you still say that, okay, if there was some issues related, would you still say that those issues should have been brought back to the board? I mean, i- if they're, i- if you, if we're saying, okay, the COO has that authority to work with SLOST projects or whatever, so. But, all right, so would you say that if there is some issues that those should be brought back to the board? I mean, would you say that they should be brought back to the board? If those were some issues, you know, prior to this resignation or?
There were several issues that was ongoing, and if we had to wait and stop and come take every issue before the board, projects would never, ever get finished.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
No, 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 no. I, I'm still, I still have questions. I appreciate you, Mrs., you know, Mrs. Cohelis, but I, I would rather for the attorney. My next question right now, the contracts with Pond Inc., according to the letter that I received from Silverman, so do the contracts with Pond and Company and the contracts with Brown Design, do they provide, does those contracts say that they will provide program management functions?
We have received information from central services that indicates either the existing contracts that we have with our A and E service providers or our C M at-risk providers either already provide us with some level of project management provision of services, or we can request those A and E companies and C M at-risk companies to, to perform those project management services if we request.
Should that have been brought back to the board, I would think?
What part?
That part about the, the addition. Right, Pond and Company and, and.
If the contract already provides they can do that, then why do we come back and discuss what the contract allows them to do?
I haven't seen that wording. Will you provide that wording?
It's in the contract.
So the contract says that Pond and Brown Design Group will provide program management services? I mean, I thought we had Silverman contracted for program management.
I can't say that the contracts with those vendors specifically says that they will provide project management services. But when you look at what project management services encompasses, I, I believe and, and Ms., Ms. Brewer can help with this response that those additional contract providers for A and E and C M at-risk, their contracts either already allow them to provide what we include as project management services, or we can ask them to provide the service going forward.
Let me just.
As needed.
Ms. Barnes, we were provided a SLOST program update book from Mr. Cohelis. Did you receive one of those?
I did.
Okay, in it, Ms. Brewer goes through and she outlines the duplications of services between A and E and the project manager.
Twenty-three of them.
Right, so the, the question being asked about what one can do and what one cannot do, is it not true that they were both being able to do the same function? And that was one of the noted duplications of services?
Yes.
And my question is not whether they can or can't. I'm just saying, this, this whole procedure here still, I just feel that legal should have been a part of, you know, the modification of any of the contracts. The board should have been briefed along, you know, as to these issues that were going on. And I, I do understand, Mr. Chair, that you cannot stop for every little issue, but something of this nature. I, I just would have think that the board would be notified of this and legal bring it back to the board. You know, we've got some issues, we've got some problems, and we need to review this. If the board had, and then the board decide, how are we gonna go forward with this? So.
Have there been any contracts modified or proposed to be modified?
The issues that was ongoing or that we had, they were being talked through. And for whatever reason, Mr. Silverman decided to tender his resignation. Now, we supposed to go to Mr. Silverman and say, don't do it, stop, no, we don't want to take it. I don't agree with that.
And I, I know, and I'm not saying that he can't, but what I am saying, I just feel like we should have, we should have been briefed and know what led up to these discussions of his, prior to his resignation. Doesn't he have, we've already, he's, he spent monies, I mean, how much has he spent?
I wasn't a part of the discussion, so there was, there was nothing at that point for the legal department to, to bring to the board. But once we did receive Mr. Silverman's letter, to the extent that there was any ambiguity about what his letter was meant to convey, we wanted to bring that to the board to clarify any type of confusion about what the, the forward or the ongoing contractual relationship would be between the parties. So that's why we, that's why the law department suggested the resolution this evening.
I read the letter. The letter was dated January twenty-ninth or something. Okay, and if I recall, I received this booklet February something, last week, twelfth, I believe. Now, my belief is somewhere in there, the commissioners should have been made aware of what was going on with Silverman. I mean, from the very beginning, whether there were duplications, whether there was an overpayment, whatever was going on, we should have been made aware. We hired Silverman.
We did overpay in each resolution that came to our desk to extend time, grant more time, provided for a dollar figure that we had to pay in addition. My question is, can we have an internal investigation and audit into Silverman's practice and what they charged us for those practices? In reading what was provided to us, the community has already stated that these SLOST projects were taking so long to complete. There are four projects in the contract that says he was supposed to oversee. Only one got built, and there are three more to build, and he's gotten paid more than the contract originally provided for. So it appears to me he didn't have the county's best interest at heart because he allowed for delays, which allow him to get more money, which decrease the amount of money that we can put to these projects, especially the animal control building that now has to be reduced because we don't have enough money, because we gave him so much more money than he was entitled to. So I'm, I'm requesting an investigation and audit into his practices, how this was not available to us, how we didn't see it, any other ambiguities in the process, because people who lost were the citizens, because we overpaid. And doesn't, and reading this information seems very, very fishy to me.
And, and let me clarify, I am not arguing for Silverman. I'm arguing the procedure that led up to this. I, I am not arguing.
I know, but I, I know you're not. What I'm asking for is a, an investigation. Is that possible?
That's, it's the board's pleasure.
And, and include it in that. I, I would like to know, like, also include it in that, the conversations, just whatever led up, you know, which would, since they're gonna go hand in hand, what led up to this resignation and so forth? And the different contacts between COO Cohelis or whoever, whoever he's talked to, whatever, so. And that's, that's it. I mean, the way I see it right now, okay, we have Silverman who feels, okay, my contract is over just by virtue of the resignation letter, even though we're gonna vote on that tonight. But I'm still unsure if that's, that's valid to end the relationship or whatever, so.
If he wants, he, he basically quit. He said, I quit. So what do we do? And we overpaid him, so if he stays, we have to pay him two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. That's almost four hundred thousand dollars more than he was supposed to get.
Okay, at this point, where you finish, Commissioner Gregory?
Yes.
I want to hear from COO Cohelis.
Are we gonna go over the information we've been in the booklet? I mean, yeah, we've got that book. And as I said, my, my questions were from a.
Hold on, hold on. I had, had your time. I want to hear from, I want to hear from.
Yeah, I would like to address the issue of procedure. The Board of Commissioners, in when they authorized Resolution twenty thirteen dash twelve on January eighth of two thousand and thirteen establishing the position of chief operating officer, they authorized a companion document, which was the job classification and authority that goes with that position. Specifically listed under essential functions of the COO is to monitor the progress and status of SLOST projects in assigned, for assigned departments. Also, insurance, ensures compliance of contracts and grants as it relates to assigned departments. That would encompass contracts with SLOST projects relating to particular projects. In this case, particularly the police precinct and the animal control. Furthermore, the board passed Resolution twenty thirteen dash three sixteen, which the board passed on December seventeenth of twenty thirteen. In that ordinance, it was an update to the county ordinance, it enumerates the authority given to the chief operating officer, specifically Paragraph one, subsection E, where it reads, "The chief operating officer shall supervise the following positions, and persons holding said positions shall report directly to the chief operating officer, the capital improvements manager parentheses, or assigned project manager of capital SLOST projects." Furthermore, under Paragraph five, it states that the chief operating officer shall oversee, monitor, advise contractors and or department directors that are assigned to SLOST projects to ensure that all SLOST projects are implemented as required in the chief operating officer's classification. As I enumerated to you in detail in the memo that I wrote to you, which was comprehensive in nature to cover not only the RFP about overall SLOST program management, I also covered the fact that we had cost overruns due to delays in projects starting and stopping, which had caused there to be an alarming rise in the amount of soft costs, meaning those costs expended for project management and architectural fees, causing these projects to go over budget. The only way to make up that shortfall would be either to decrease the functionality, square footage, or quality of the building, and/or a fourth option, which was totally untenable as it pertained to the animal control building, the fire building, and any other building left undone. And that would be to take it out of owner contingency before the project even began, which meant if it was taken out to fund what was going to be an easily calculable overrun in project management, because the work authorization for Silverman on various projects either expired on October thirty-first prior to me coming here, or January first of twenty fifteen, or is due to expire on April first of twenty fifteen. Those, none of those projects would be complete by such time. Matter of fact, the animal control building is not scheduled to break ground for several months hence, and the fire, multi-fire building is not scheduled to begin. So, since those authorizations had already expired or were due to expire no later than April first of twenty fifteen, it is easily calculable how much more the overage was going to be. The conservative number, which you referred to, Ms. Rooks, is in the memo, is two hundred and forty, two, two hundred and forty thousand dollars in more overruns. In addition to the one hundred and twelve thousand dollars that has already been authorized thus far. The, when I had a conversation with Silverman, it was not acrimonious whatsoever. When I came on board, this board made it very clear to me, both individually and through, through conversations that we had, it was clear with the chairman, his, his order was to get these projects going. I can also say that as a citizen of this county and someone who had been here before and knew that these projects had been slotted to take off in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, I was dumbfounded and stunned that it had gone so long and these projects had not even begun. These projects have been under contract for almost four, a little over four years. It was time to get them done. The fact that we have contracts with a program manager for four buildings, five buildings, of which only one was complete, and of the remaining four, only one has broken ground, was stunning to me. Silverman also, I met personally with Arnie Silverman in my office. He personally expressed his frustration that the projects had not gone any faster than they had. He also knew that the only way for us to proceed, he was at the point where he wasn't going to go forward unless he got more work authorizations extended from y'all. unless he got more work authorizations extended from y'all. And he also knew that the only way to do it would be to, to fund it would be to either take it out of, out of contingency, owner contingency. And when I asked him specifically, is that a wise thing to do? Can we guarantee that we will not hit any more rock? As we have already hit on, on the police precinct, given the location on Anvil Block Road, which appears to have the roots of Stone Mountain in it, he said, "No, he could not." And he was concerned that the contingency was not sufficient to cover the animal control. And the only way to, for him, his, his offer was that we take, fund his increase in project management by taking all of the contingency, owner contingency away. That's incredibly unwise, based on my experience in construction, both commercial and residential. That would be ludicrous, and I told him that I would not make that recommendation to this board. I also told, I also asked him about the fire building. He also was very concerned about that, that that may not be enough. So, when we came down to how do we fund it, I told him that I was not inclined to come before this board and ask for an extension of work authorization. He said, "Well, will it help you if I resign?" I said, "I'm not telling you what to do or not to do. You, you, if you're offering your resignation, I will consider it. I need to evaluate. In case you do resign, what needs to be done?" That's why I had to follow up conversations, which according to the ordinance, which you have enumerated, the authority vested in the Chief Operating Officer, I clearly have the authority to speak with vendors. I clearly have the authority to monitor contract, contract, contracts with project managers working on capital SPOLOST projects. That's clearly enumerated in the ordinance. Based on that authority enumerated in the ordinance, I met with those architects. Concurrent with that, I asked Ms. Brewer, who is a contract compliance expert and an attorney in her own right to conduct an analysis of the A&E contracts? And she enumerated 23 core functions, which all core functions appear to be duplicated, a duplication of services. There's, it's not the A&E's fault, and it's not Silverman's fault that that existed. We should not have signed those contracts. There was a duplication of services, and in my opinion, there was an added layer of, of management that need not to have been engaged in on projects this simple and this small. Based on that, once I got the report back from, from Ms. Brewer, I met with the architects, reaffirmed with each of them individually, are these true? Yes. For the few things that we see that aren't covered as a duplication of services between the contracts, would you be willing to do them? Would you be able to in fact take over project management? The project management that has taken place up until this point has basically been scheduling of meetings. When you haven't broken ground, there's not a project to manage. The architect draws the blueprints. The architect does the layman's, the yeoman's work. It is his drawings that is, that is used as a document to hold accountable the CM at risk. He draws the plans. He draws the specifications, he or she. In the case of Brown Design Group, Ms. Cooper is the lead person. Once the project begins, the architect is the first line of quality assurance, not the project manager. The architect approves change orders, then funnels them up to the project manager. There is simply duplication of services. I applaud Mr. Silverman's willingness to help us meet budget. This is not the way he wanted us to go. This was, this, nothing I put in there was meant to be casting dispersion on him or his performance. What I am saying is that we have had delays that have caused the costs to go through the roof. In my opinion, accord, and also included in your report was the contract footnote, footnote seven. I gave you a copy of the contract, and if you look at Silverman's contract, Article 9, 9.4.1, it states, "Project manager may terminate this agreement by giving owner-written notice of such termination, in which event this agreement shall be terminated at the time designated by the project manager in its notice of termination to owner." I did not write this contract, ladies and gentlemen. It is a contract which was presented to you, and y'all signed off four years ago on.
I appreciate all the information, and thank you very much, but I think we have missed a step back. This information you have given us in this notebook should have been given to us at least 30 days ago. So, we should have been kept abreast of what was going on.
It was a dynamic situation. He did not tender, we did not come to that conclusion. He offered his resignation in one meeting.
Even before his resignation, we should have been aware of what was going on.
I came, I came on the job November 5th, is all I've been doing is trying to get my arms around the SPOLOST projects and.
The commissioner should have been made, should have been made aware.
Point taken. Thank you.
I have a question. In the contract, it, it mentions reports on page 10 of 33, 7.4. No later than the 30th day of each month during the term of this agreement, which, with respect to the preceding calendar month, project manager shall furnish owner a statement of all disbursements. Has he done that?
We are pulling the record of everything that he has done and hasn't done. A lot of them, frankly, a lot of the financial reporting was done by staff, by what I have been able to ascertain since I came on. What I have seen is a series of emails in which Silverman's staff has been actually tasking our staff with carrying out certain functions and providing certain information. But, before I can verify that, I want to get all the information at one time so that I can respond to you totally before I, before I say something that is not 100% accurate.
It also provides that we could do an audit. Do you know whether or not the county has ever audited Silverman?
It does not appear that they have ever audited Silverman, and frankly, it, it doesn't appear that, it appears that time has gotten away from the county in the past four years. I'll just say that.
Any other questions?
I do. I'm sorry. 8.3.2, Paragraph 11. I don't know, and this may just be Ms. Barnes's semantics, I hope it's semantics. If a project is placed on hold, payment is not required for completed work. Does that help us out at all?
It does. If, if you're talking about as presently what we've turned, where we're at, we are working with Silverman. There are certain, the contract calls for, he has to, he has not made, been made final, final payments have not been made to him. He's preparing a final invoice. There's a list of documents which he has to provide. He has also worked very hard with, to transition to architects and the Hogan Construction Company. We have had meetings with them to assure a smooth transition. And matter of fact, I, and I believe the chairman said he even went out and inspected, but I know that Ms. Brewer and I went out and inspected progress on the police precinct. There has been no slowdown whatsoever. Furthermore, I've been in contact with the architects, both Brown Design for the Police Precinct and Pond and Company for the Animal Control. They're humming along beautifully with no delays. They're going to meet. Matter of fact, they're probably going to accelerate the schedule because some of the previous schedules had some artificial expansions in time that weren't, they could, they could have met a tighter deadline. So, as far as this is concerned, yes, this, this, this paragraph you're referring to does give us ability to hold final payment if he doesn't complete final documents in compliance with the contract.
And 9.1, the default of the project manager.
9.1?
Page 12.
Yes. Well, that's, okay. If that's a separate thing you want us to consider, that's fine. I, I get your point.
Okay.
And as we said before, Mr. Cohelis gave us a lot of what he put in the book, we still like all the information leading up to it, written. As Ms. Hambrik said, things we should have had before tonight. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not finished. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Just on, to piggyback off of what he's gone, what the gentleman said this afternoon about the RFPs for small local business enterprises, and that this package for the SPOLOST project man, program manager is out there. I, I know that we don't traditionally get to see, we have not traditionally seen what the package is. We don't know the language. He intimated that there is some language in there that will preclude small local businesses from participating. In your notebook, Mr. Cohelis, you mentioned that the prior RFP led to the decision to withdraw the RFP from consideration. It was, we never knew there was a problem with an RFP. It was not considered because the Board of Commissioners withdrew it. We never knew there was a issue with the RFPs.
I had sent an email talking about.
I'm, I'm sorry, prior to you coming aboard.
Oh, oh, okay.
We never knew there was an issue with the RFP, so there was not the reason we did not consider them. So, now that we know that there was some language in there, and now we have someone, I know he doesn't live here, but considering we would like for small local businesses to participate, how, how far along are you in the process? I see the outline here. I think the commissioners would probably appreciate looking at the RFP to see if there are some ways to ensure that we are not preventing small local businesses, minority businesses, and women businesses from participating in the SPOLOST project.
Ms. Commissioner, I spoke to that gentleman, and he said that he misread the RFP. It does not require specifically SPOLOST program manager. It's either SPOLOST program manager or construction management assistants. So, there is either or provision in there so that they have construction program management experience? That would count also.
Okay.
It does say that clearly in the RFP, it's not solely SPOLOST. It's or.
Okay. But, notwithstanding that, do we have an opportunity to review the RFP before it's completed to ensure that what we want as a county commission is what we're going to get from who we're, who's going to be selected?
Yes. This one is already out. The period for questions has expired, and those will be answered. But, for this RFP, it's, it's already brought into the process, and it will close on March 11th.
Yeah. One of the things I wanted to address was the, the responses that we got from everyone that participated this time. We had a huge turnout. A lot of vendors that participated before, and new ones came in. They were very complimentary of the quality of the RFP document which went out for this one, especially those who had historical perspective and had participated in the last bid process, where they had, where they had given a proposal. This, we had 107 questions which arose out of the last document, which in of itself is a red flag indicator that the document was not clear as to what was expected. We also, we had, how many? 45? I believe we had 45 different companies represented, represented. And there was a lot of encouragement for partnering, mentoring, and allowing smaller local, local-owned businesses to partner up with larger companies who had more experience to be able to build a team. Emphasis was on team building. The other thing that we're looking for, and if it alluded to in, in my report to you where we talked about the A&E services and contractors going forward, one of the things that we're looking to do is approve a, a broad range of contractors based on tiers, and those tiers will be established by their ability to achieve bonding. So, instead of us having just big projects out there where the only way a company can get bonded for five, where, where they have to expect to get bonded for $5 or $10 million, we're going to have tiers where smaller, local, minority-owned businesses could qualify for construction projects where the bonding requirements are only a half a million dollars. You see what I'm saying? And that'll be an opportunity for them to get more county work. We're trying to broaden the appeal and broaden the opportunity. Furthermore, we're working on a plan, which I discussed with the chairman, about Clayton First, which, what, what has happened traditionally when these projects go out, we have encouragement to have vendor, to have vendor meetings where the contractors are, we have a, a vendor fair where the contractors, potential contractors are taught how to bid on projects, how to get qualified. So, we, we allow local, small minority businesses to learn the process. We want to take it a step farther. We want to include in, in our contracts with A&E firms, with construction managers, that they, that they encourage their subcontractors to advertise job availability, where we are looking to hire licensed electricians, plumbers, carpenters, to be hired by subcontractors working on our contra, on, on our SPOLOST projects, where those subcontractors are encouraged to hire local citizens who live in this community, who pay their taxes in this community. That has never been done before in, in my 35-plus years in Clayton County government, and that is what we're working to do now, so that we can, and so we can end up hiring the folks who pay the taxes to build the buildings that, that we're seeking to build.
That's great.
So, we can actually put people to work.
Absolutely.
Another thing that we're looking on, that we've uncovered, has been that there has been a practice. We have contracts in place. Our contracts say that a general contractor cannot reassign his contract to another general contractor without our approval. Sadly, that has not been the case, and we have not made it a requirement that that general contractor writes into his contract that no subcontractor can reassign his contract to another subcontractor. And we've uncovered evidence which leads us to believe that certain minority contractors have reassigned their contracts to non-minority firms.
Are we investigating that?
Yes, we are investigating that, and that's highly, I mean, that, that flies in the face of everything this board has sought to do. Okay? As soon as I uncovered it, we are, we are proceeding to further investigate it. I alerted the chairman of it, where we have a minority contractor who is listed on the list of contractors that was brought before you as receiving 11.3% of the contract, and he in turn reassigned it to another subcontractor who is not a DBE contractor.
Mr. C.
So, that's, that's what it appears to be right now, and that's what we're looking into. If it turns out to be true, then I'm going to be making some recommendations and changes of policy to prevent that from happening. One of the ones is what I just alluded to you, that we write it into our contracts for general contractors to prevent that from happening.
Will that come to the board?
Sure.
Ms. Brewer, one of the things, you know, of course, some years ago, the board implemented the study to, the diversity study that brought about the DBE, you know, program. So, are the practices that you're using or you're planning to use in the purchasing department, are they falling under that guise, or are you talking about doing something totally new? Because again, years, a few years ago, we recognized that Clayton County was not adequately awarding contracts to minorities, women, disadvantaged businesses, and so forth. So, again, I don't know what's been put in place as far as, you know, the contract compliance and so forth. Are you all still operating under that program that was put in place then, or you plan to operate under?
Yes, we're operating under that. One of the components that when we had the last.
Speak up a little louder, Michael.
The pre-bid meeting for the SPOLOST program manager, RFP that's on the street now, we did provide an opportunity at the pre-bid. We provided two comfort rooms and several office space for individuals who wanted to network together so that they could form teams. We encouraged that. Also, we are looking to track and monitor that participation. One thing is now, we don't have an electronic system for that, but we are looking to make some improvements with our contract compliance division so that we can more adequately track and monitor that participation. But, we fully are intending to continue to implement that program.
Okay. And of course, I, I would like to say, you know, Mr. Cohelis alluded, alluded to, you know, four years ago, whatever. When you think about it, you've got to go back, you know, and this is, maybe it's just a little bit too much, but four years ago, we were in the midst of the worst economic downturn we've ever had. When we build these projects, we got to staff them. There are operating costs to go with it. Along with that, we were doing the disadvantaged, disadvantaged business study. So, being a part of that board, I, I just can't sit here and, you know, let him put out that people were just holding hands or incompetent or so forth. But, anyway, that's just it. Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions, discussion? All right, the motion, there's a motion and a second.
Oh, I, I have a question. I'm sorry.
One more question.
Well, in the future, if this board. Well, in the future, if this board, not just the chairman, but if this board would be made aware of problems that are going on before a final decision is made, can we have a part in that decision-making?
What's the final decision you're talking about?
What was the decision?
When somebody resigns?
I'm saying, in the future, can we be made aware of decisions that are made?
Yes. The answer to that is yes.
Just being informed. I guess, thank you.
All right. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay, I'm going to vote against that, because I, I just don't feel.
Okay, it's 3-2 with Commissioners, Gregory and Hambrik opposing.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain an additional motion? I just mentioned it earlier, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that legal department investigates Silverman's practices. There may not be anything, but I'm making a motion that we do that.
All right. Motion on the floors?
I'll second that. I have a question. Is the term investigate or to audit consistent with the language in the contract?
Both.
You're asking for.
If that authority is already listed in the contract, I don't think we would need to make a motion or approve it.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
If we had authority to do so in the contract.
Yeah, it's, it's to investigate, there just been too many irregularities that have come up, so investigate.
So, for clarification purposes, it's to investigate and not audit, or I guess audit could be.
The contract says audit, you have to do that anyway. This is outside of the contract.
So, are you good with that, the second?
I am, I am. I was just looking for some clarity.
Chairman, if I may, my interest is, is with, with the board, so would the board be okay with this being an independent investigation?
Yes.
Absolutely, that's exactly what we're asking for.
And earlier, when Commissioner Rooks said that, I also mentioned that we, I would like to see within that, you know, all that led up to Silverman's resignation.
Any other questions on the motion for an investigation? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I need an executive session for litigation.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 25 is an appointment to the Animal Control Board to fill down expired term of Tim Kobe, who has resigned. This term expires on March 12th, 2016. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations this evening?
Yes, I have a nomination. I would like to nominate Ms. Gloria McLean.
I'll second it.
Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Item number 26 is an appointment to the Hospital Authority Board to fill down expired term of Cephas Jackson, who has resigned. This term expires on October 31st, 2015. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations this evening?
I would like to nominate Quinn Howard.
I'll second it.
Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Items 27 and 28 are for the appointment of Chandler Sharma. This is for the Development Authority as well as the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Clayton County. It's my understanding that Mr. Chandler Sharma is not interested in being reappointed. Does the board have any appointments for these two boards? Hearing none, we'll bring that back at the next meeting. This concludes the agenda. We did have a request to go into executive session for litigation.
Before we close out, I would like for Jason Etheridge to stand up, please. He's my constituent aide, so that staff can see him, know who he is. I know he's already talked to quite a few people. He, he is a citizen taxpayer of the county, District 3. So, this is Jason, when you talk to him.
Welcome aboard, Jason. Let's give him a round of applause. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
After that, we go into executive session.
I'll second it, probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? It's unanimous.